Well, good morning, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I want to welcome you to our meeting this Tuesday morning, beautiful Tuesday morning. And I just want to make sure that we have all of the members of the Board of Supervisors present. And so Eric, I, yes, great, love to see the screen here. Perfect. Thank you. So I'll just say your names and wait, I don't know if you're here. Vice Chair Fowler. Are you present?
I am present. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. We have Supervisor Babbitt. You would just let me know if you're present.
Chairwoman, I do not see Supervisor Babbitt yet.
Okay. Super, Supervisor Ryan.
Hi, Liz. Hey, Lena. Hello, everybody. Good morning.
Good morning. And Supervisor Parks. If you'll let me know that you're here, if you just unmute yourself. Okay, I don't hear Supervisor Parks yet. I'm sure they'll be joining shortly, but we'll have the clerk of the board just check in with them to make sure that they're not having any technical difficulties while we continue with our meeting. So the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. For those who are able to stand, would you please stand and join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is a call to the public. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to be able to communicate with the Board of Supervisors about something that is on their mind. Please know that the Board of Supervisors is not able to enter into a full discussion about it or even have an exchange about it, but we are happy to listen and then we can follow up at a later date. And so if you would like to talk to the Board of Supervisors right now, we're going to let you know how you can do that. There's a way on the Teams meeting for you to be able to be recognized and to have some time to speak to us. And each speaker has about five minutes to be able to speak to the Board of Supervisors. I know that we have one person that has indicated that she would like to speak, and this is the Census Partnership Specialist. Her name is Kimberly Robinson, who would like to visit with us about the census. Let me turn it over to Eric first, though, Eric Peterson, Director of Public Affairs, to let the public know how they can use their computer or their phone to let us know they would like to speak. Eric?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Eric Peterson, Public Affairs Director. To the members of the public who wish to speak, if you are an attendee not previously given permission by the clerk to be a presenter, what you would need to do is go to the Q&amp;A, which you'll see on your right side of your screen. There's a little bubble with a question mark in it. Click that if it's not already open, and you can type a question in that way, which we can respond to a question or comment. Or you'll see a moderator posting there I had put up that if, again, you were not previously identified as a presenter, Ms. Robinson, you have been already, so you can stay with us, but you need to call the phone number that I've posted there. The phone bridge will let you in to be able to speak to the board publicly. That number is 623-473-9267. The conference ID is 316-691-582. And that is the number posted on our agenda as well. And Madam Chair, just as a quick side note, I think Supervisor Babbitt has joined us in the presenter queue, so he is present as well.
Yes, he is. We can hear you.
Okay, yeah, something's been going on. Thank you. I'll mute now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Supervisor Babbitt. And we also know that Supervisor Parks is on. So Supervisor Parks, would you like to let us know that you're on? And you'll just need to unmute. I can see that you're on. We'll wait to hear from you then after the call to the public. So first, I would like to invite the Census Partnership Specialist, Kimberly Robinson, who would like to speak to the board about that, the census. So Ms. Robinson, welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. I trust that everyone can hear me.
We can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you to the Coconino County Board of Supervisors and municipal and town leadership for your support of the 2020 census for the past few years. Also, Coconino County has an amazing census team led by Kim Musselman, Sarah Decter, and Greg Webb. And Paige, you have Tim Swan, who is the Community Development Director, and he spearheads Paige's on Census Complete Count Committee. Now, the 2020 census timeline has altered due to COVID-19 closures. The census is available now for the community to self-respond at 2020census.gov until October 31st. Through quarters such as dormitories, jails, and nursing homes will be counted through September 3rd. For our type of enumeration area six locations, such as Page, these are areas that only get post office delivery. They do not have home mail delivery. They're called TEA 6. Census takers will drop off invitations to respond and paper questionnaires at the front doors from June 13th through July 9th. The Census Bureau is asking people who live in these TEA 6 areas, again, meaning that you do not have home US Postal Service delivery, to wait for an numerator to drop off their questionnaires because the Census Bureau needs to update these addresses while delivering invitations to respond. These areas are also called update/leave areas, which means that we update the address and leave a questionnaire. This will impact our tribal areas, so many towns will not see the response stats rise any significant amount until the end of June. The Census Bureau has scheduled our third offices to reopen by June 1st, and census data will be delivered to the White House by April 2021 as opposed to December 31st, 2020. We encourage everyone who's received a postcard or letter from the US Census Bureau to complete their questionnaire online at 2020census.gov. There are nine questions, and it takes less than 10 minutes. Federal dollars are allocated to disaster response, are based upon census data, and in situations like the current, Coconino County's 2010 census numbers inform many decisions on the federal level, which also influence state, city, and town choices. Please remember that the census is 100% confidential, and all information is locked down in statistical format for 72 years. If anyone has any questions, I'll put my contact information in the chat box. You can also call or text me at 602-315-1295. I'm based in Flagstaff, so don't let the area code fool you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the census, of course, working with our communities as there have been limitations, of course, associated with the virus for people to be able to, as you said, be on the ground and for people to be able to return their census. And so thank you so much, and we continue to, we continue to commit to partner with you and to do everything that we can to make sure that we have an accurate count. But we appreciate all of your efforts, and we know that this is a challenging time for the census and census workers, and so thank you so much for your partnership.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Are there other members of the public who wish to speak to the Board of Supervisors at this time? As Eric mentioned, you can do so by dialing the number 623-473-9267 and enter the passcode Eric, do we have anybody else in the queue?
I don't see anyone. I would just remind folks that if they are on the phone to press *6 to unmute themselves if they are trying to be recognized.
Okay, well, let's give it another like 30 seconds for people to unmute if they would like by pressing *6, you said. Okay, seeing or hearing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close the public participation, and we'll go on to our proclamation. Today, we have the consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation condemning recent hate speech and incitement of violence against Navajo people. And I want to thank our Public Affairs Department for composing this proclamation, and would like to introduce Vice Chair Fowler to read the proclamation for consideration by the Board of Supervisors. Vice Chair Fowler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Coconino County Proclamation condemning recent hate speech and inciting of violence against Navajo people. Whereas Coconino County condemns hate motivated crimes, discrimination, or discriminatory acts and attitudes in all forms, and whereas Coconino County is the traditional homeland of multiple indigenous communities who deserve respect and tolerance and whose tribal governments are great partners in responding to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas in 2017, Coconino County Board of Supervisors acted unequivocally, condemned any racist propaganda advocacy of racial supremacy, religious sexual orientation, or other cultural discrimination, or Resolution 2017-50. And whereas COVID-19 is a serious public threat to all Coconino County residents and knows no culture, race, gender, border, or religion. And whereas Coconino County is very, is ever more strengthened during this crisis by the incredible multitude of people, ideas, religion, nationality, and races in our community. And whereas Coconino County is wholeheartedly embraces diversity and tolerance by standing up to discrimination in any form and celebrate the strength and resilience unleashed by the conscious frame, consciousness frame in the values of tolerance and acceptance now. Therefore, Coconino County Board of Supervisors do hereby condemn recent hate speech and incitement of violence against Navajo people, and reiterates its, "Our belief in diversity makes us strong and resilient when facing difficult times. Signed and sealed this 28th day of April 2020, Coconino County Board of Supervisors." Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I would like to ask if there is a motion to approve this proclamation?
I move, Madam Chair, that we approve this proclamation.
Is there a second?
No, I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to add that this is such an important proclamation, and I really appreciate our board and our county really taking a position against hate crimes or any kind of discrimination in our region. I think it is so important. It's not just the Navajo people. We have to look at all people, no matter who they are. We're all people. We're all five-fingered individuals, and we all have rights, and we have, we have a right to be at peace with ourselves and have others have, treat us with dignity and respect, every individual in our county and actually the world. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else who would like to make some comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Ryan?
Yeah, absolutely. I want to speak up strongly in support of this. I thank Supervisor Fowler for bringing this forward, but I think we, as a board, this is a big piece that we've been committed to. We celebrate culture here and have zero tolerance for hate and intolerance. And so if ever there's a time that we need to be working together, and it's a time like now with COVID-19, and as I said, we definitely celebrate culture, and I really appreciate this being brought forward, especially while we have different statistics associated with COVID-19. It's not a piece associated with who you are as an individual so much as dynamics in a community where transmission can occur. It's happened that way throughout the country. It's happened that way throughout the globe, that there are no definitions specific to one community versus another, other than we have transmission occurring and we have the health threat out there. So thank you, Supervisor Fowler, for bringing this forward. And in all of us, we need to be vigilant and work together to, you know, combat this pandemic.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. Any other board members that wish to comment? Okay, well, I would like to comment. I mean, this is what leadership is all about. This is right here. This is leadership in action, speaking out when we see that there is an injustice or perhaps a focus on a particular community or group of peoples that is not consistent with the values that we have in Coconino County. And so this should not be surprising to anyone that Coconino County would bring a proclamation forward that basically stands in opposition to hate crimes and to speech against a particular group of people. And as Vice Chair Fowler mentioned eloquently in her comments, we are in this together. We learn from one another. We embrace one another. We celebrate and respect each other's cultures, and that has been something that has been consistent in Coconino County as an organization and in our communities that we want to continue to see. And so if we see anything other than that, then of course, we're going to stand up and we're going to remind people of the fact that that is counter to our values and that we want to be able to clearly state what are the values that we have in Coconino County. So I do want to thank Vice Chair Fowler for bringing this forward. Want to thank every single one of our members of our Board of Supervisors for what I am understanding is going to be the passing of this proclamation based on the comments today, and really encourage our organization to share this, not only within our organization, but throughout Coconino County and with other government entities, so that is very clear where Coconino County stands. So with that, is there a motion to approve this proclamation? Oh, I'm sorry. There's been a motion to approve the proclamation. It was by Vice Chair Fowler, excuse me, was seconded by Supervisor Ryan. So there is a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Hearing none opposed, it passes unanimously. Okay, thank you so much. We're now going to go on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a number of items that we vote on in one motion. These are items that we've either had a work session on prior or they're administrative in nature, so that's why we take them as one motion, the multiple items. However, any member of the Board of Supervisors may request that an item be considered separately. Are there any items that any member of the board would like to consider separately at this time?
Madam Chair, this is Supervisor Babbitt.
Yes, Supervisor Babbitt.
Item four.
Uh huh.
Item four, please.
Okay. Great. Any other members of the board that wish to consider an item separately?
Madam Chair, this is Supervisor Ryan.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if you're willing, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items two through seven, with item four being separated, and I would like to make a comment after. Madam Chair.
Sure. Is there a second?
This is Supervisor Fowler. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion by Supervisor Ryan to approve items on the consent agenda, except item four, a second by Vice Chair Fowler, and a comment. Go ahead, Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For items five and six, these are, these are actions associated with agreements that we have on the Belmont Safety Project. In this case, it's associated with the widening of the Shadow Mountain Road, which is part of its traffic management, part of it is multimodal, addressing the ability to have pedestrian opportunities out there as well. And so it's good to see this project moving forward. In the end, when it's done, everybody, it's challenging when construction happens, but once it's over, it sure makes a big difference, and it definitely is helping with the safety project out there. So I commend staff, again, for working hard on this issue and moving forward with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for those comments, Supervisor Ryan. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. Hearing none opposed, passes unanimously. Let's go to item number four, Supervisor Babbitt.
How are you hearing me? The audio is pretty tough and echoey. You hearing me okay?
So I hear you fine. It was that there's a person, I don't think it's you that's echoey, because when I heard you before, it wasn't echoey, but there's somebody else that maybe has not muted their phone that's causing the echo. So let me just ask everybody right now just to take a moment and either mute their phone or the computer device that you're using until it's time for you to speak, and that will reduce the echo. Supervisor Babbitt, go ahead.
Great. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the opportunity. So, you know, I was looking over, so this is a contract for security services for two of the COVID-related facilities that the county is engaged in operating. One is the Aspen Hotel, and then the other is Fort Tuthill. And, you know, we've had conversations. I think the board knows I am pretty uncomfortable about where we are financially in our structure and long-term sustainability, fiscal sustainability around the contract. I visited the Aspen Hotel. I was there again yesterday. I understand why we have security there. I think that is appropriate while we're doing this, but I had questions on why we are paying for security at Fort Tuthill for the testing, when the testing is really pretty modest out there. I think we did 40 yesterday. Why we are paying non-law enforcement security out there, especially when we have so many furlough, or not, excuse me, not furloughed, but at-home workforce who possibly could be there? You know, and I was going over the contract, and, you know, there's some pretty, pretty, what I would call hefty fees, $150 travel costs. What I'm assuming is to the, and that's per trip, $150 per trip for a staff person to go to the agency. I'm assuming we are the agency. And I just want to say, I really want us to be really sharp, sharpening our pencils on these numbers. I feel like, I feel like we are providing good services that has to be coupled with fiscal, you know, fiscal guardrails, because we cannot burn our money this way. And so I'd like to get those questions answered on why, and if it's all protocol always to have paid security at a testing site. And, you know, the details of the contract in this one do matter, $150 per trip. I want to get clarity on that as well.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Babbitt. We're going to go ahead and call on Ms. Kim Musselman, who is going to, who has information to answer those questions. Kim?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Babbitt. To answer your first question regarding the protocol, it is required when we have medical providers at our testing facilities that we have security on site. So not only do we have security on site at Fort Tuthill, we also arrange and schedule security when we have been in Williams, when we're going to be up in Fredonia, and also security in Tucson Grand Canyon when we were there. So that is a requirement of the medical providers and ADHS with respect to providing testing at the testing site. So that's the answer to that question? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. So what is the qualification? So what are the qualifications of that security that is required in that, in that aspect?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Babbitt, I will have to get back with you on that with the specific requirement, as I am not certain, I don't have that in front of me right now, so I don't want to misspeak, so I can certainly follow back up with that answer at a later time.
Because that's where the rub is, is how do we, what is defined as security? These are non-Leo people. They are, they, they may have some experience in their background, but, so that's a really important question on what the right scale, and if it requires, you know, private contracted security, so be it, if that's how, if that's, these conditions are. And who's putting the conditions on this when you say the medical providers require? Just help me understand who that is.
So my understanding, and again, I will need to get to some other verification about this, but my understanding is it is when we have medical providers, so we have a provider on site, who are the medical providers who are actually doing the screening for the tests, and that is the requirement that we have from them, that we have security on site.
Okay. And who is the medical provider? It is not, is, can you tell me who that is?
I believe at Fort Tuthill, the medical provider is someone from FMC. When we have been at some of our other sites, that is a provider from North Country Healthcare.
Great. Thanks.
And to answer your other question regarding the travel fees, one of the things that I will clarify for you is that the security personnel that are performing this service for us in all of these different factions are actually staying on site. They, we have them being housed in some of our hotel rooms at the Aspen Hotel, so they are not traveling back and forth on a daily basis. They are in town and are providing the service for us seven days a week.
So are you saying, are you saying there's no mileage reimbursement as the contract states? Because the contract states you get that 150 per officer per trip, and you also get free lodging state paid for by the county.
So the only other mileage that we are paying is when they are traveling outside of Flagstaff to provide service for us.
Okay.
And then I will just add that the, actually now I just lost my train of thought, so I apologize, I'll pause and I'll ask if you have any other, oh, the other, I know what I was going to mention. I'm sorry, when we were in the middle of getting all of these service providers and contracts stood up at the very beginning of standing up our testing sites, we were unable to get local, other security contracts put into place for our needs.
So there's been no kind of competitive, when you, so there was not a competitive call out for this? Is that when you first stood these folks up?
Supervisor Babett, I'm not certain, as I was not at the very beginning of this. I believe that when we started with getting security in place for our testing sites, it was getting it stood up rather quickly, as you're aware. I do not believe that there was any formal RFP type of process, because one, we, at the time we were standing up, we didn't know how long we were going to be operating in this fashion.
Awesome, okay. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. And also, I know that Dr. Marie Peoples is on the line, and she can also provide some additional information. Dr. Peoples?
Hi, thank you, Chair Archuleta. And I didn't hear all the questions, I had to turn my microphone off while Ms. Musselman, or, excuse me, my speaker's off while Ms. Musselman was. So I heard her part of the conversation, but not the direct conversations. So it is correct that when we first were standing this up, we could not find local security vendors. They had insurance requirements and they were all very concerned with exposure to their employees being at the test site in particular. So rather than going with various contracts to have a separate security for Aspen and then to have separate security for Tuthill, we did roll it in into one security and that did prove to be more cost beneficial. We also worked with our facilities team, as you know, Sue Brown and facilities has had to secure, excuse me, and facilities have had to secure security for various county departments and various county functions. So we looked at what their security contractors already had in place and worked with them to help us with this process as well. And unfortunately, those did not pan out, which again is why we're going with this other company. They did not have the insurance requirements, or they covered their own insurance for employees to be at what they considered a high-risk exposure site. Thank you, Chair Archuleta.
Thank you for the information. Supervisor Babett, any further questions?
Just say, you know, comment, you know, I will just share, you know, the Board has been hearing this from me, and I'm fairly conflicted here. I really want us to go the extra mile to make sure our fiscal discipline stays. And I have concerns on how, I do not have concerns in any way, shape, or form on the types of public health endeavors we are doing. There is a balance to the cost of those. The Hotel Aspen is at an unsustainable rate, from my perspective. We've started some conversations around there, but I have a very, pretty clear that I think there are different ways to do business. This is another example. This is not, you know, $250,000 or $270,000 a month contract. This is a $30,000 plus, plus, plus contract. And, but it's just, it's adding up. And I got to say, I am one who just does believe that the budgetary impacts we are walking into are going to be profound. And fiscal discipline and thoughtful allocation and expenditure of resources has been such an important hallmark of why we get to do certain things in this county. And, you know, if we haven't, if it is time before we approve this to have another reach out to a competitive process, maybe with local folks, I'm all for that. You know, I just, I just feel like we are, we are, we are on a financial burn that's got some cliffs coming to the edge of it. And so, you know, I'm kind of conflicted and I have questions unanswered about what the actual security requirements are. I think that's important. We have a lot of staff who are not working their traditional job. If there was a way to help offset some of those in a safe manner with folks, you know, I don't know what the security requirements are. And so, you know, that's where I am. I think if the Board wants to move forward, that is fine. I'm not sure I'm going to get there with these unanswered questions. And, you know, not trying to be a nitpick here, but I, I am really concerned about our fiscal positioning.
Let me call on Dr. Peoples to see if she has any additional information to share. Dr. Peoples?
Thank you, Chair Archuleta. I certainly understand the fiscal concerns of the Board. This whole COVID-19 endeavor has been nothing short of expensive. I will share that, so what Ms. Musselman shared in terms of it being provider requirements, which I'm sure goes to their facility requirements and their licensure requirements as well. We were required to provide security. We do have some options now that we are at this stage and that ADHS has changed the guidance for who can be tested and that it is pretty much open to everyone. So we don't have to have those screenings now. And as you guys know, that guidance was issued just last week, so we're still new into that. So we could stop partnering with our medical providers, because we don't necessarily have to have the screenings now. And we could just run the testing sites without having a medical provider onsite. Initially, it was needed, because we did not have a medical provider employed by Health and Human Services that could do those screenings and write orders if needed. So we could look at doing an option such as that. I'll also share that early on, aside from the provider requirements, having the security at Tuthill and then when we had the site at the CCC campus, it was really helpful. I mean, at that time, we had a lot of traffic through traffic and we had a lot of people, of course, concerned. And I'll just say, there were some difficult populations. And so having security so our staff and providers could do their jobs was incredibly needed. With the upcoming testing blitz that I'll share during my COVID-19 updates, where the state of Arizona is hoping to have 10,000 to 20,000 individuals tested, we are anticipating a lot of traffic through the testing sites that we're standing up. So having security during that time would also be helpful. We have included security cost for the ADHS testing blitz. They are offering $15,000 per site for the three weekends that they're doing, which to Supervisor Babett's point, will not cover all of our costs. But the state is recognizing that security has been an important part of these testing sites. And so we are including that in the cost and hoping that we can be reimbursed for at least those three weekends. We don't have responses on those yet, but we were allowed to include it, so I anticipate it could be approved. Anyhow, thank you, Chair Archuleta. I will close with that, that we are willing to look at our security at the testing sites if we no longer wish to have providers there.
And so that's, that's actually, that's really helpful, thanks Marie. So just so I'm clear then, so this contract, it is based on an hours billable? Is that correct? So if we were to, you accurately note that the landscape has changed and those same security requirements, you know, may be different, or they may be evolving, this contract allows us to, is a buffet-type contract where we are only paying for the services that are, this is not a blanket contract, right? So if we stop testing in two weeks, all those, you know, and because of the blitz, for example, then we don't pay, that's correct? Hello?
Oh, I apologize, I was answering you without my mic on. So you are correct Supervisor Babett. We could certainly reduce and then our costs would reduce as well. This is a fee for service, if you will.
Okay, well, that's helpful and I appreciate the context. You know, I still, I still would like the question answered on what are this, what are the qualifications? I'm not suggesting we leave healthcare workers out without some level of security and oversight. I am asking the question of what are the requirements of what that security looks like? And, because that, you know, that's pretty important. So I hope that we ask ourselves that question. I hope that if we can have designated security staff who function as security and points of contact that are less expensive, I hope we do that. So that's helpful though, thank you.
Chair Babett, or, excuse me, I apologize, Chair Archuleta, Supervisor Babett. We will work with our partners and I will find that exact language for you. And I apologize, in Week Seven, I don't remember what their initial requirements were, aside from it had to be uniformed individuals, so we could not just pull in our regular staff. We did also reach out, I should have mentioned this earlier. We did reach out to our local law enforcement to see if they could perhaps help support us or had off-duty officers that could help support us. And they, they were all incredibly willing. They simply did not have the staffing or the availability to do that either. So we will circle back with them and see if anything has changed in their worlds. And I will get that clear, clearer response from the healthcare providers that have been partnering with us in terms of what their minimum requirements are. And I will return that to the Board, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair Archuleta.
Vice Chair Fowler, I think Chair Archuleta dropped real quick. Could you call on Mr. Parks, please? Mr. Parks, go ahead, Chair Archuleta is off the call for a moment.
All right, thank you, Eric. I ought to have reservations about spending money on things when, when we are looking at possibly long-term, serious depression here. So I find also that these, Hotel Aspen especially are unsustainable, as well as, as, I'm sorry, I'm getting a feed through from my computer.
Mr. Parks, you want to make sure your computer speakers are off, so.
So, anyway, this, this security, my questions are along the same lines as Supervisor Babett's. What are the questions for the, for the security folks? I mean, what are the qualifications for the security folks? Can we, I noticed that this is for unarmed security. And my, my question partly is, is this just traffic control? What are these security people doing when they're there? Are they providing traffic control? Are they providing any other services other than just sitting in a chair or standing there? I don't, I don't understand. My other, I suppose, question would be, have we had security there all along, in both places? And if, if so, who provided the security? Was it the same company? Was, was it, or was it someone else? Was it our own Sheriff's Department? Who was it? I suppose that, I have to say that even if we do start paying for security services and, and, and continue paying for the Hotel Aspen, I understand that we, FEMA may only pay us back 75% of the funds that we spend on, on the money that we're spending for COVID-19. So I guess my questions are, are, who provided the security if we had it all along? If it was, if it was required by the, the medical personnel, then, or the medical, FMC? And, and, oh, the other health department? Anyway, I feel it's unsustainable. I've been against the Hotel Aspen project all along. I think we really need to renegotiate a contract there for, for the individuals that stay there every night. We are wasting 112 to 114 rooms out of 120 every night. And so, at the average of six to eight guests. So I'm very conflicted about this whole funding problem, as I see it. All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Chair Archuleta, members of the Board. In response to Supervisor Parks' questions.
Marie, Marie?
Yes?
Can you hang on a second?
Absolutely.
This is Matt Ryan. We need to get a Chair of the Board real quick here. So Lino, are you out there? I'm seeing her muted, but there you go.
Hi, yes, I am here Supervisor Archuleta, is that, okay.
So you're going to Chair then, right?
I, I am, yes.
Okay.
I didn't realize that Supervisor Archuleta was not on the line. So I appreciate the heads up, thank you so much. And Marie, if you, thank you, Matt Supervisor.
Thank you, and I, I hope you guys can still hear me, I've lost Vice Chair Fowler.
I, I can continue, I muted myself, so.
Thank you.
If you would, please, Marie.
Absolutely, thank you Vice Chair Fowler and Supervisor Parks. Thank you for the questions and the discussion. Just for clarification, this is the same company that has provided the services from the start of us, both operating Aspen and operating the drive-through sites, regardless if we were at Tuthill or at the CCC location. This company has also worked with us when we stood up sites in Williams and in Toussaint. So this is a formality, they have been operating in this space. And again, it has been a requirement of the providers. But as I shared with Supervisor Babett in some of my responses, and we're happy to look at things now that the landscape has changed. But initially, the, and they're doing more than traffic control. Public Works has been assisting with traffic control, but they're certainly helping with that if necessary. But they are providing a presence. They are providing a uniformed presence, which has been necessary with, unfortunately, some of the incidents that have occurred. And you may have seen across the nation and within Arizona, there have been testing sites that have had their supplies stolen, along with the specimen kits. And so we do need a uniformed presence. And I believe you asked a question regarding law enforcement. We absolutely reached out to our law enforcement early on and they are always very willing to assist us. But in these instances, they did not have the staffing to be able to provide that daily presence that is required both for safety and for the requirements of the providers. So we will continue looking at cost reduction methods. I hear the Board loud and clear and we want to continue to be great partners in that as we meet the public health needs while we do this. So thank you.
Are there any other questions on this item?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Jimmy Jane. So Sue Brown has joined us and she had a brief comment on this item. Director Brown?
Madam, Madam Chair, this is Sue Brown, Director of Facilities Management. I just wanted to add that one of the things, when the need for security first came up in the early days, that we looked for is our ability to allow security access to our buildings, their hiring practices and background checking. We did not find that available with our local vendors. So Emergency Manager Director Todd Whitney had to go out to a larger group of possible contractors and have history with Anderson and was able to verify that they were appropriately background checked. And therefore, we were comfortable with granting them access to our buildings. Without that, knowing that staff, in some cases, in early, in early days, we were providing, they were providing security at King Street at different hours of the night, we needed to make sure that we had folks who were qualified and had been background checked as, that would mean that there were straggling staff in that building by themselves in a very difficult and emotional time. So we felt that that was an absolute imperative. Anderson Security could do that, we could not get that from other vendors. So the quality of the vendor was also a big piece of it. They needed to have the background, have the training, have what we needed to actually provide security in the horrible event that it would be needed. So I hope that is in some way helpful, thank you.
Thank you so much, Director Brown. Any other questions for either Director Brown or Dr. Peoples or Ms. Musselman?
Madam Chair, this is Matt Ryan.
Yes, go ahead.
Just quickly, you know, after hearing this and the discussion associated with security and where we are with the contract. security, and where we are with the contract, you know, I think at this point, yes, you know, makes sense to go ahead and approve it, but it is also that broader discussion of, you know, taking a look at these contracts that we needed to initiate rapidly, and pausing, and doing a review associated with them, and determining, you know, is there a more economic model? There are times that we can't, because we're under, you know, the pressure of the emergency, but a lot has changed since when we began. And so, that's a question that I think is, you know, the driver of the conversation, that it's like, it is, it's very expensive, and there are many other needs that we do want to fulfill. So, I'm okay proceeding with this at this moment, we have a way of modifying if we approve this, but it does swing back to, let's expedite these conversations and these reviews, so that we do make sure that we're attempting to, we should be frugal. Under the circumstances, it creates new challenges, here's a chance to pause, let's not belabor it, but take a look at it.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan, I think that is an opportunity to take a look at it, I understand the need, needing to go forth, it is required, but it is an opportunity for staff to go back and also take a look at it, and bring new information forward, to see if there's others that can meet the requirements, and also, look and see how robust the actual security needs to be, to see if we can bring down costs. And so, with that, is there a motion to approve this item?
Madam Chair, I have one more question.
Go ahead, Supervisor Parks.
Yes, as far as the unarmed security guards, I heard Sue Brown allude to the fact that there might be a terrible thing that would happen there. Why are we using unarmed security guards, if that is a possibility? Should we not have armed security guards there? Thank you.
Thank you. Director Brown, if you're on the line, would you please provide your perspective on the question?
Madam Chair, thank you. Supervisor Parks, I think, I think in general, and I am speaking, I'm riffing a bit here, because I would, I'm standing in, I think, for Director Todd Whitney of Emergency Management, we had some limited conversations on this, but we were able to move forward. I think in our consideration was, is that we are not always focused on the idea of a terroristic act, if you will, with a gun, we are sometimes focused on physical altercation, in the sense that somebody may be very pressed to get a test, or there may be something that happens if someone is intoxicated, or another things. And in those cases, firearms are not primarily necessary. But in this case, the security company that was hired had a number of different abilities, and a number of different trainings that would really help. In the need, and everyone's acknowledged this from the very beginning, that if something more severe happened, then certainly, we are calling law enforcement ASAP. But we are anticipating simply those things that come more from panic and emotional issues, not necessarily a terroristic threat. And that's how we prepared at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on this item?
Madam Chair, this is Matt Ryan. I'll go ahead and move, I'll go ahead and move that we approve an independent contract or agreement between Anderson Security Agency, LTD, and Coconino County, to provide an unarmed security services for COVID-19 non-crown aggregate sheltering operations at Hotel Aspen, and for specimen collection site at Fort Tud Hill.
Chair, second?
I'll second. Supervisor Babbitt-
Thank you, motion by Supervisor Ryan, seconded by Supervisor Babbitt. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, four approves, and four ayes and one nay, the motion passes. Thank you very much, and look forward to additional information and review of this item going forward. So, now, may I have a motion to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors?
So moved, Matt Ryan.
Supervisor Lena Fowler, second.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Supervisor Parks, that was, I just want to make sure that I was in favor to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors?
That's fair.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Passes unanimously. We are now acting as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. We have one item on our Flood Control Consent Agenda. This is Consideration and Possible Action to Approve the First Amendment of an Agreement with Tiffany Construction for RFQ 2020-103, the CMR Mountain Dell Channel Improvement Project, with a guaranteed maximum price of $2,22,214.91. Lucinda Andriani, Director of Public Works, is going to present this item. Well, she's actually going to be present to answer any questions, I don't think we need a full presentation. But let me ask if there's any member of the board who wants additional information, or has any questions on this item.
Madam Chair, this is Matt Ryan, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I know it's a consent item, and I know we've kind of belabored the time component this morning, but my gosh, it's been almost 20 years, and even more so, that we've been analyzing this area, along with other areas in the county, where we're prone to flooding. We brought in, over time, we developed different levels of standards, some that came when we had Dale Wegner as our first engineer of the county. And then, we modified through different priority processes, and then, we shifted projects around, and then, we had, developed new standards, in this case, you know, so that we can reinforce the science behind how we analyze areas that are prone to flooding. And while, we were looking at, Pinewood is the highest priority, the drawback associated with Pinewood, after FEMA analysis occurred in Yavapai in Coconino County, in Oak Creek, was that, wow, we could reduce the impact of flooding to Pinewood if we opened the channel under the bridge under I-17. It would have detrimental, potential detrimental impact downstream. And that was our highest priority project. The second priority project was Mountain Dell, because by developing this channel, it could reduce or minimize the impact of flooding to 30 different structures. And so, many analyses, different prioritization, but using the sciences, we're finally at that point of proceeding with the project. And so, you know, I just want to compliment staff on the work that's been done. Lucinda might have a couple of comments after this, but I did want to separate it, and at least, I know we're rushed for time, but at least comment on this, and put appreciation into, you know, the many different engineers and staff that have worked on this project.
Thank you very much, Director Ryan. Any other comments on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you want to add something?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, this is Lucinda Andriani, Deputy County Manager, and I just want to thank Supervisor Ryan for recognizing the efforts. There's been a real focused effort over about the last five or six years, to study this area and identify this project. This is a very highly-needed project. Mountain Dell has sustained significant flooding many times in past history, and we're very excited to move forward. I want to thank County Engineer Christopher Tressler, as well as our Consulting Engineer Chris Dusa, on that project, what I think will be a very important project. And we hope in the end, this will also reduce the need for flood insurance in that area as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, is there a motion to approve this item?
Madam Chair, this is Supervisor, or Director Matt Ryan. I move that we approve the First Amendment of an Agreement with Tiffany Construction for RFQ 2020-103, the CMR Mountain Dell Channel Improvement Project, with a guaranteed maximum price of $2,22,214.91.
Thank you, Chair, second?
Second, it's Supervisor Lena Fowler.
Thank you very much, we have a motion by Director Ryan, seconded by Director Fowler. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, the motion passes. We're going to go now on to our next item, is there a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved, Matt Ryan.
Second.
Great, thank you. Motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, passes unanimously. We're now the Board of Supervisors, the next item on our agenda is the Health District Consent Agenda, their motion to resolve as the Health District Board of Directors.
So moved, Matt Ryan.
Second, Art.
Motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, passes unanimously. This is the Health District Consent Agenda. Any questions on this item? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we, oh, you got it, Art?
Yep.
I'll second the motion.
Nice, thank you. There is a motion of approval made by Supervisor, excuse me, Director, we are the Health District Director Babbitt, seconded by Director Ryan. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You are opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors?
So moved, Director Babbitt.
Second the motion, Director Ryan.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. Okay, we are now on to discussion and Consideration and Possible Action to Adopt a Proclamation imposing Campfire Restrictions as a Result of the COVID-19 Impact. Emergency Management has proposed this, and Deputy County Manager Lucinda Andriani will introduce this item. And we have a number of people that are lined up to speak, which we appreciate that very much, and I'm sure that Deputy County Manager Andriani will introduce them. So, go ahead, Lucinda.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members, Lucinda Andriani, Deputy County Manager. This morning, we are presenting for your consideration a plot proclamation to establish a campfire ban that only applies to unincorporated areas of the county, and I want to confirm, does not apply to state lands, national parks, or tribal lands. This campfire ban aligns with the campfire ban imposed recently by the U.S. Forest Services, I think you're aware, which began last Thursday. As Todd will describe from the proclamation, the Forest Service has made significant modifications to its firefighting strategies to reduce the exposure of their firefighting crews to COVID-19. This is a very big concern for the Forest Service. How do they reduce potential exposure? And they've identified a number of measures that they're going to be taking to reduce that exposure, but primarily, obviously, one of the number-one ways is prevention, is prevention of wildfires. And of course, we know this from a long history of fires that have begun here in our area, and throughout northern Arizona, from campfires, including the Schultz Fire back in 2010. Importantly, that, you know, again, this will reduce the likelihood of wildfires, and thus, reduce the impacts to those crews. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Todd Whitney, our Emergency Manager, who will walk through the proclamation. And then, we have comments being made by three members of our fire community, fire leadership community, and Todd will introduce those members as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, and go ahead. We have Mr. Whitney on the line, thank you very much, go ahead, Todd.
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the board, thank you very much for this opportunity to present. Today, I'd like to present the proclamation to the Board of Supervisors in relation to entering into a campfire ban, aligning ourselves with the Forest Service and regional partners. Madam Chair, would you like me to read the proclamation?
Please, go ahead.
Whereas on March 18th, 2020, the Coconino County Board of Supervisors declared a local emergency pursuant to ARS 26311, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas pursuant to ARS 26311, and declared of emergency issued by the Coconino County, the Chairperson of the Board of Supervisors of Coconino County is authorized to govern by proclamation, and make necessary appropriate orders to preserve peace and order of unincorporated areas of the county. Whereas, there are currently federal, state, and local emergency declarations in effect, and whereas, on April 13th, 2020, the Governor of Arizona issued Executive Order 2020-18 to implement enhanced mitigation strategies, in response to COVID-19 pandemic, which included the implementation of the CDC guidance regarding social distancing. And whereas, Coconino County currently has the highest COVID-19 infection rate per 100,000 people, and the highest death rate per 100,000 people in the state of Arizona. And whereas, the United States Forest Service has issued a campfire ban throughout the Coconino County jurisdictional boundary, to include building, maintaining, attending to, or using fire, using a fire, campfire, or stove fire. This does not include gas, propane-powered stoves, grills, or lanterns that may have an on-and-off switch. Due to conditions caused by COVID-19 pandemic, in an effort to minimize potential exposures of firefighters to the threat of COVID-19, and to reduce the impacts of poor air quality of those who service, suffering from, and at the risk of COVID-19. And whereas, COVID- I'm sorry, whereas, wildland firefighting is a hazardous profession, that at times limits the ability for social distancing during missions, and the level of physical fatigue and stress placed on firefighters makes them more vulnerable to this highly-infectious disease. Whereas, in light of COVID-19, the Forest Service has issued the new guidelines on management of wildfires on national forest lands, including: Manage the Forest with a Directive of Full Suppression on All Fires to Limit the Size and Potential Spread of a Fire, Minimizing Staff Exposure. Personal resources may be limited due to the infection of a crew member, thus placing an entire crew under quarantine, is very possible. Limit the Number of Fire Responses by Eliminating Unpermitted Campfires, which puts Forest Service and Fire Department Wildland Crews at Much Less Risk. Redefine Fire Response Camps to Be More Cognizant of Social Distancing. When feasible, use Spike Camps instead of large main camps. And then, use of more aviation assets to respond to wildfires, to limit the exposure of personnel. Now therefore may, now therefore be proclaimed and imposed as follows. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and protect the lands of the unincorporated areas of the county from wildfires, it is reasonable and unnecessary to impose certain temporary restrictions on campfires consistent with the ban issued by the U.S. United States Forest Service. All campfires are banned throughout the jurisdiction of unincorporated areas of the county. Such ban includes building, maintaining, attending, or using a fire, campfire, or stove fire. This campfire ban does not include gas propane-powered stoves, grills, or lanterns that have an on-and-off switch. Further, this campfire ban shall not interfere with proactive forest restoration measures and related activities currently underway throughout Coconino County on national forest lands or private lands. This proclamation shall be effective immediately upon adoption due to the foregoing emergency and shall remain in effect until rescinded by the Board of Supervisors. This proclamation shall be enforced pursuant to ARS 26316 and 317.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to present Dirk Foreman, followed by Mark Gaylord and Art Gonzalez.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And go ahead, Mr. Foreman, from the Highlands Fire Department. You are the chief of the Highlands Fire District, and we appreciate you being with us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair and Supervisors, certainly, we can all understand that during a pandemic, there's a need for interim protocols that are distinctly different than when we're under normal circumstances. As a firefighting community, we've got concerns that, you know, due to COVID infections, that we would be of our abilities to sustain viable, safe, and effective workforces for responses. The Forest Service has taken a proactive stance by prohibiting open fires. We also understand that balancing personal freedom with the larger public good is always a challenge, but following suit with the Forest Service would demonstrate a commitment to our communities and to our first responders. I have spoken with a number of the county chiefs, to include Pinewood, Pontarosa, Mormon Lake, Summit District, Blue Ridge, and Forest Lakes, and none have any objection to such a prohibition. And we would certainly appreciate your consideration to approve this proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your perspective with us. We appreciate it. And the next person we have to speak is the Flagstaff Fire Department and Summit Fire District Chief, Mark Gaylord. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman Archuleta, and members of the Board of Supervisors. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today in support of this proclamation. I am the Fire Chief for the City of Flagstaff, and I'm also representing the Summit Fire Medical District, and also the Arizona Fire Chiefs Association, Regional Representative for Coconino County. Just confirm that the Arizona Fire Chiefs Association also supports the proclamation and the ideals that it represents. Chief Foreman, as always, did a really nice job of outlining the concerns that we have. And I think really, the unprecedented nature of the pandemic is really the driving force behind this very unique and special consideration and out-of-the-norm action that's being put before you today. Really, it boils down to this. We have a responsibility to protect these communities and protect our firefighters and our responders, our paramedics and EMTs. And the wildfire threat poses a serious, a serious threat to our ability to do that. And that can come in a number of ways. For us, it might be the fact that we would congregate at a fire on initial attack in our region, and then that draws down our ability to respond to local emergencies, EMS, fire, and rescue. It might represent, as you're all very familiar, many times, the requirements of large fires, they actually cause us to bring a large, out-of-area workforce to the community, and the potential threat of that kind of communal action. And its threat to our limited EMS and medical resources in our community is something that weighs heavily on our minds as well. The other, the other thing that I will say, that for the, for the community and for those that travel to our communities, as we, as we move forward, a consistent base of restrictions is always helpful to folks in the community. The City of Flagstaff went into stage-two restrictions last week, and so your action would make, make the conditions to folks in the community and outside of the community somewhat seamless, with the exception, I understand, of state lands. So I stand here in support of the, of the, of the actual action that you're about to take, and can answer any questions you may have at any point.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, and the perspective that you bring. Appreciate having discussion and questions and answers, and you being available, everyone who's speaking today. The next person we have on our agenda to speak is Mr. Art Gonzalez, the Kaibab National Forest Fire Staff Officer. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Whitney, and all other guests. This is my second time in two weeks addressing the board, so while I consider it a privilege, I wish it was under far better circumstances. I just want to talk a little bit about the Forest Service campfire restrictions that have been mentioned, and how that dovetails into what the Board is proposing. So April 22, 1700, last Wednesday, all national forests in Arizona entered into campfire ban. That was preceded the week earlier, April 15, by all national forests in New Mexico. But why do we do this? I take you back to one key focus from the chief of the Forest Service and her preseason intent for all of 2020 fire season. And that is specifically that our focus will continue to be protecting the health of our employees and that of the American public we serve. Now, up until this point in the agenda, I hear that overlying tone in the board's agenda as well, protecting the public. But dovetails nicely. So what we're trying to do here is we're preparing, we've entered into an unprecedented fire season with COVID concerns. So with these restrictions, what we're trying to do is, one, reduce the number of potential fires out there, and, two, prevent the, try to reduce the potential for a large fire. Now, while I talk, this team software adds 20 years of age to me, so I would like to share an image that folks can look at while I talk about a few points here. So we're trying to adjust to COVID, and what we've been hearing is social distancing is... I'm sure we've had a lot of moisture this fall, this spring, but that's also a trap. What we see on years like this is we tend to see a lax concern around campfires. Campfires is the leading cause of human-caused wildland fires for the Forest Service. Years like this where folks see a lot of green grass and a lot of water, it reduces that, that sense of concern we have on those extremely dry drought years where everybody's on the same page. So in trying to reduce the number of fires and large fires, we're trying to reduce the exposure to our employees and to our communities that we serve. So wildland fire, I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, is a challenge on any given year. And we've only added to the complexity with all the unknowns around COVID-19. In a year especially like this, we've seen an initial numbers, we're seeing about 150%, 150% increased use of national forests. And that includes the lands that incorporate Coconino County. On any weekend, you can go out to any lake, any campsite, any area of high recreation, and just see the impacts that we have this year. Our national forests, the forests that encompass Coconino County, heavily relied on this year for folks to get out. And so trying to reduce the number of potential fires is why we have campfire restrictions. Right now, it's COVID-related. We consider a lot of other things, heavyweights of COVID response. But as we continue to dry out, we may see conditions that we move beyond COVID focus into our typical fire restrictions. And that put Coconino, that would put Coconino County in line with where we're headed into the future as well. So Art Babbitt had, Supervisor Babbitt had mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we have, you know, concern around redundancy in our system. So yes, we do have redundancy in our system. But with campfire restrictions, what we're trying to do is reduce the potential on, or taxing those redundancies or the capacity that we have to respond to these fires. So using our risk management principles, we've entered into the restriction aimed at specifically trying to reduce those potential impacts. So since we've gotten into restrictions, we've had, you know, a fair amount of negative response to that, but the overwhelming support has been a positive support. One of the things that we have to remind ourselves as we see some of these negative responses or sentiments towards our restrictions, is we got to go back to, we are trying to reduce exposure to our employees and our communities. And in Coconino County, in Coconino County, those are one and the same. Our firefighters, our engine captains, our fire management officers, our, our, our public affairs officers, all of those folks, our, they are the community. They are your Coconino County constituents. So when we say reducing exposure, that means to everybody. You see the picture in front of you, that is a typical fire camp. In a year like this where we're talking social distance, imagine yourself as a Todd Whitney, as an Art Babbitt, as a Matt Ryan, as a Lena Fowler, putting yourself in that position on a significant fire in Coconino County. The reduced ability for that exposure is what we're trying to get at, see the camps there. That's what a typical fire camp looks like. We don't know if we have the capacity to bring 500, 600 individuals in for a single fire and tax our medical facilities in these small communities. By enacting campfire restrictions, that is one place that we know we have an issue across the Forest Service. We want to try to get to reducing that. So I am going to take my video off because I tend to lose some capacity here. So I want to bring this all back to Coconino County. So we appreciate the board considering this proclamation. Interagency alignment has shown in the past that we can provide information and help protect an audience at a larger scale with interagency alignment. I've been part of discussions with Flagstaff and Williams Police Departments, Coconino County. Those years, we don't have alignment. We have forest users drive-by folks that have campfires. Maybe they're appropriate. But when you drive by and you don't know the jurisdiction of where that individual has a campfire, if they drive by a fire on Coconino County, and they come out to the national forest, they feel like, well, that person that had a fire, we can have a fire. So to the extent possible, we understand every agency has their considerations they have to make. And to the extent possible, the more we can align and support each other, the easier it is to spread that message across the communities we serve and that non-local population that we serve, those folks that are using our national forests, using Coconino County lands. And we appreciate and we support the county, their endeavor to try to enact campfire bans, further alignment to protect our employees, protect our responders, protect our community. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. Let me ask the members of the board if there are any questions, either of Director Andreani, or Whitney, or any of the fire leadership professionals that have spoken to us at this particular time. I'll open it up to the board for questions and/or comments.
Madam Chair, this is Matt Ryan, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Ryan.
All right. First and foremost, you know, in, I think Art summarized it well in the end there, Art Gonzalez, of how we've coordinated in the past. When we had the meeting two weeks ago, or a week ago, I've lost track, but, you know, it was obvious that there are additional concerns that are occurring as it relates to this pandemic. We have a pandemic. And what does it mean to our first responders? I've heard from various chiefs out there that some of these smaller districts, they're worried of, you know, one or two people being exposed where it would take them out of service, and they wouldn't be able to respond to calls. And, and after hearing that, that was a big piece of, shouldn't we be aligning, again, with our first responders and our fire folks on this? We have alignment of the Chiefs Association of Fire Districts, of PFAC, of the Forest Service on this, and to protect, you know, beyond just fighting fires, the EMTs on their EMS responses. And then we also know human behavior, you know, as much as, you know, we have the conscientious folk, we have people that just don't know, and they come up, and, and we see our numbers grow each year with unattended campfires. And, and again, as noted, that's, that's the leading cause of where our fires come from. So, you know, I appreciate the work of everybody and what they're doing, and I think it makes perfect sense that we align and ask people, you know, to, you know, just step back from having an exposed fire. They still have the opportunity with the on-off switches to have their barbecues, you know, providing a release for them, so to speak, to get outside and, and be in their communities. And, and so, and we, you know, again, I think back to, what was it, two or three years ago, when we had a horrendous spring, that we, we imposed bans much earlier than normal. But by all the proactive efforts when we were aligned together with our coordinating fire agencies and first responders, the number of wildfires and the starts were down. So really threatening year, but, but it really definitely had it. One last piece on this is the idea of having, you know, to be preventative and not have the starts. As Art Gonzalez noted, the 150% increased use on Forest Service. Right now, our social media down in Sedona is, it's, it's kind of, you know, not to be, use a pun, but it's kind of caught on fire there in that the number of people and the traffic that's come into the region is, is pretty extraordinary. We're starting to have high areas of concentration again. And to have that threat of fire is a piece that we, we at least would help to reduce one of the common denominators that could threaten our communities. So I appreciate all the work they're doing. I hope our adjacent cities would do the same when I did send out notice and/or have conversations with the mayors and managers. It looks like we have pretty strong alignment with our incorporated communities as well. Thank you, Madam Chair. Everything went silent. Are we still here?
No, thank you Supervisor Ryan, I appreciate it. Thank you for actually speaking to myself because I had myself on mute. But what I did say to you was, thank you very much. I appreciated your comments and certainly appreciate your leadership and advocacy for bringing this forward. And I know that you also took on the role of speaking to the various And I know that you also took on the role of speaking to the various mayors of the cities and towns within Coconino County and touching bases with other community leaders. And I appreciate you doing that regarding the, this proclamation that we're considering today. Are there other members of the board that wish to either ask a question or make a comment on this item before we vote on the proclamation?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
Yeah, just want to appreciate the folks coming out and it's really helpful. These, I think as Chief Foreman mentioned, this is a balancing act between, you know, what we're used to doing and what we preventatively try to manage and mitigate. And, you know, there are people who kind of have different feelings about it, but I think it's the right call. And it's just really helpful as both Chief of Flagstaff and Highlands referenced to have all the districts on board. That just is super helpful to us to make sure that, you know, we're hitting all parts of the county. The last, I did have a question. I don't know who this is for, so I'm very supportive of this. Thank you for doing it. I did have a question. If the same standards are utilized in our fire districts for if, as they are in the wildland fire crews that was referenced. So if in a wildland fire crew, if one person tests positive, my understanding is the entire crew goes into quarantine. To my understanding, that is not how other first responders do it, for example. But, but I'm interested in that. Is that the protocol? If there's one, one positive, does the entire crew at Station Four, for example, go into quarantine? Or is it kind of a more, is it a little bit more nuanced piece? And I'll leave that to whoever, whether Dirk or Mark, whoever wants to talk to it.
Thank you very much. Who would like to speak to this item?
Art, thank you for the questions. Mark Gaylord, I'll tackle the, the Station Four question as to the impacts of quarantining on a, on a wildland crew. We haven't had to experience that. What I will tell you, it is nuanced, as you say. For instance, we have had approximately eight of our responders in Flagstaff and/or Summit be tested for the virus. Approximately half of them were symptomatic. And by the way, good news, all eight are negative for the virus. But so some of them were symptomatically like symptoms, no, no known exposure, but they were sick. And so we tested them and they quarantined in, at their homes. We also have had a couple of crews that were non-symptomatic that took direct hits in the aftermath of the call. We had discovered that the patient that they had been serving and providing care to was in fact a COVID confirmed patient. And so that crew went into a kind of a quarantine at home. There was a, we have available quarantining that's away from the home for any of our members that want that in the region. And, and they awaited results of the test. They were negative. We have not had a confirmed case and we have not had the necessity of taking entire stations down and quarantining as of yet, although we have plans in place to do that. That's our experience thus far.
Great. Well, that's, I'm just interested in how you handle it. It sounds like it's not a black and white. It's a case by case. So thanks, thanks very much. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Babbitt, Dirk Foreman?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to tag on to what Chief Gaylord said, I'm just now, just came across my desk, interim standard operating procedure from the federal government. And I'm not reading in it anywhere that, that an entire crew would need to be quarantined if a single member was screened in such a manner to suggest COVID. And, and perhaps Art can speak to that, Art Gonzalez, because it, it doesn't seem like that's what is out there on the table right now.
Okay. So that, that is, appreciate that. I'm just going from our staff report. And I think it was also relational to what Art said. There was a dispatch person last week and they closed the whole dispatch down. And so the staff report does say the whole crew goes offline and it may not be as simple as that, and that's totally fine. I just was looking to try to better understand the path forward.
Sure. Understood. Thank you.
Thanks, Dirk.
Other questions? Comments?
Madam Chair, this is Matt Ryan.
Go ahead Supervisor Ryan.
So just quickly, you know, it looks like we're moving towards approval. We always need to keep it in tentative language until we approve. However, a question would be communication efforts. I think we would need to do or have coordination, communication coordination efforts to occur. And, and, you know, I was wondering, have any discussions occurred with any of the districts, the Forest Service or with our own communications team on this?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Ryan. Eric Peterson is aware of the proclamation ahead in front of you. We have, we do not have a, a, a path forward until the proclamation's been approved.
But if approved, the intent is to communicate broadly because we're going to have a lot of visitors here pretty soon here and then the communities as well.
Mr. Ryan, this is Eric Peterson. Just to respond to that, yes, we intend that should this be an action the board takes, we obviously will make our, our full press push and also spread this across to the entire statewide media list so that the, everyone can be made aware. It'll be on our social media as well and other creative ways that we can wrap it into our other COVID-19 related and just general messaging as we go forward.
All right. Thank you. And then if we do have, as I understand, some of the cities just by ordinance will be moving forward as well. And so, you know, coordination with them might be helpful too. But good. It's glad, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay, great. Well, yes, go ahead Todd.
Sorry, Todd Whitney. Just one last comment. This morning in, in, in respect to Supervisor Ryan, I did survey a community member who had that question. The community is looking, the community is waiting for the county. That question did come up. What was our stance? I explained the process this morning, which you and the board will be performing here shortly. And they were very, very appreciative of the, the process and the path forward. So people are watching and are looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we're to the point where we can move to request a motion on this item. This is very timely, especially with the increasing weather that we're experiencing right now, increasing temperatures and really understand, you know, from the fire professionals and from our emergency operations manager, the necessity of this and certainly I'm hearing support from the board. So is there a motion to approve this item, which is the, the proclamation that we have been discussing, imposing campfire restrictions as a result of COVID-19 impacts?
Madam Chair, this is Matt Ryan. I move that we approve the proclamation imposing campfire restrictions as a result of COVID-19 impacts.
Is there a second? Just don't forget to unmute. So we can hear your.
Supervisor Babbitt, second.
Thank you so much. A motion by Supervisor Ryan to approve this item, seconded by Supervisor Babbitt. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Hearing none opposed, this motion passes unanimously. And we thank all of the presenters that have been with us on the line and sharing your expertise on this item. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you to the chiefs. Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We are now going to move on to item number 11. This is an update discussion and possible action regarding the coronavirus COVID-19 in response to actions taken by Governor of Arizona Doug Ducey. Dr. Peoples will present on this item. Just to point out that it is 11:40. Our agenda says it will go until noon. I think we probably need to try to keep it to about 10 after.
Supervisor Archileta, are you ready for me?
I, I am. And so Dr. Peoples, what I was just saying is that I was looking at the hour and was asking if you could keep the comments so that we can be finished with this item by 10 after 12. I know there's challenges in the, with the microphones between you and Ms. Mussuman. So can you hear me?
Hi, this is Marie Peoples. I can hear you Chair Archileta. Sorry, I'm just now hearing you. Were you ready for the COVID updates?
I am. And if you were going to adjust the timing of it, if we could be finished by 12:10 is what we're shooting for.
Absolutely. Happy to do that. Excellent. Thank you so much. So again, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, County Manager Jane. Appreciate the opportunity to give a really brief COVID-19 update. We are in week seven of the full COVID response and there's been many activities, as everyone knows. In the interest of time, I'll just go through some of the new things. So we are at 435 positive cases, which is still about a 20% positivity rate. And we have unfortunately had 42 deaths within our county. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, you may have seen on national news, has added a couple of new symptoms to COVID-19. So I want to share that the symptoms that had already been recognized were chills, repeated shaking with chills, muscle pain, headache, sore throat. The new one is loss of taste or smell, which may not necessarily have been new. We've heard about it in the media, but it is now recognized by CDC. Additionally, the CDC has included four emergency warning signs that I wanted to share that people should seek healthcare very quickly, and that is trouble breathing, persistent pain or pressure in the chest, new confusion, so not being quite oriented, and bluish lips or face. I also wanted to share that ADHS testing blitz that I talked about a bit earlier when we were doing consent agenda. So the State Department of Health has issued a testing challenge, if you will, that they are referring to as the testing blitz. This blitz is meant to get 10,000 to 20,000 Arizonans tested on each of those weekends. So it's really exciting. We will be participating in the testing blitz. The first one is the Saturday, May 2nd, and the other is May 9th, and then the last is May 16th. We are going to stand up for Tuthill and have a site also at the King Street location for the Saturday with the same hours of 10 to 3. And we'll have details and working with our communications team to have all of that information posted and noticed. It is open to anybody that thinks they have been exposed to COVID. So it does not require the doctor's orders that have been required in the past. So we're also excited about that. ADHS is offering $15,000 per site. It is not a straight $15,000. It depends on how many tests each site gives. I don't quite know how that's prorated or worked out yet. They also were asking about other costs such as security, traffic control, that sort of thing. So we are developing robust plans. The planning is early, although we're very far into our planning. The testing blitz opportunity was only announced last Friday. So this is a very quick turnaround and we, again, we are happy to be up to the occasion. I will share that while the state has offered this testing blitz, it has not come with testing supplies. So we are challenged by that. However, we do have a good stock of testing supplies at the moment. I wanted to go through that. We have a total of 800 kits in our stock on hand. Those are ADHS. We have 195 kits from ADHS. We've been allowed to order 50 per week and we have continued doing that. And you've heard me talk of before that we have tried to source through every site that we can. So we've sourced sterile saline kits and then we've matched them with different swabs and that has worked out well for us. So we have 299 sterile saline kits and we have 311 viral media kits, which are the traditional kits that we started out with. So we feel like we're in a good place, at least for this weekend. Of course, we don't know how many of our community members will join us at those two sites. So we are planning to go through quite a few and we are still continuing our ordering process and working with ADHS to see if because of the testing blitz, do they potentially have additional kits for us? We have not heard responses back. I also want to share, as the board knows, we did receive an Abbott rapid testing machine last Monday from Arizona Department of Health Services. We are very excited to receive that. However, it only came with 24 specimen kits. And so until we receive more kits, we're not able to deploy it in a meaningful way. We did work very quickly with Abbott Manufacturing and with the state to get staff trained on the machine. We now have several staff members that are prepared to use the machine when we do get additional kits. We have learned that we are only able to order those through the state. We are not allowed to go through Abbott Manufacturing directly. None of the counties are. The state has assured us that they are working hard to get more kits. We have requested 240. We do have plans should those 240 and additional kits be available. We would like to target some of our nursing homes and skilled nursing centers and to be able to take the Abbott machine there on site and to be able to do some testing. So we'll keep you posted on that. And as the board knows, we are still operating our isolation and quarantine hotel. As of yesterday, we've had 65 guests. We currently have 12 guests. And just as a reminder for those listening, referral into the isolation and quarantine hotel comes from any of our hospital partners or our sheltering partners. We've also had some other inquiries from other counties that have first responders that are returning from helping in New York or other places that they may have been deployed and they would like to be able to quarantine before joining their families. And so we're opening the resource to those individuals as well. And I'm sure that will continue to evolve and be fluid as we move along. The last thing that I'll note is that we had a very exciting presentation from Northern Arizona University and staff from their Center for Health Equities Research. And so they shared with us some forecasting modeling and what's happening around the nation and what they have seen within Northern Arizona. Those documents are available on the website if individuals would like to look at them and we encourage them to do so. That NAU group is also working on an executive summary that will accompany it, which will of course, as every summary does, will summarize the full reports and the charts and graphs. And we're excited to be able to share that as soon as we have it and we anticipate that being finalized by the end of the week. With that, Chair Archileta, I will go ahead and turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Marie. Let me see if there are any questions at this time about any of the information that you presented. I think one of, I'll start out with the question about the blitz. And I certainly, I think it's a great idea to be able to have a goal of testing so many people across the state over a period of weekend. And so I think just understanding that and understanding the, the amount of supplies that we have. Can I get some indication as to how many people we would be able to test, that you believe we'd be able to test? And then is that, tell me a little bit about maybe the criteria for that? Is that so that members of the public understand that? And I'm sure there's going to be increased information going out and maybe you can speak to that as well. But would it be, you know, any member of the public? Are we going to focus then on, you know, a particular, particular group that are either vulnerable first or first responders or healthcare, healthcare workers? Can you just give a little bit more information on that?
Thank you, Chair Archileta. I'd be happy to. So it is open to anybody. ADHS has said that anybody that believes they have been exposed to COVID-19 can be tested. So anybody, they do not need to have doctor's orders. They will be able to be tested. In terms of how many people we can test, we are. In terms of how many people we can test, we are trying to anticipate in terms maybe 200, 100 to 200 at each of our sites. We really have no way of knowing how many people will show up, which is why we're working very hard on our traffic and our security plan to make sure it's a great experience for those that want to be tested, as well as for our employees and volunteers. So again, we have 800 kits on hand, knowing that we want to be able to maintain operations at Fort Tuthill through next week, and as we await the state to see what other kits we will be able to get, we have some orders placed as I've shared. The tracking dates have been moving targets, so we don't necessarily want to use all of our 800 kits in the testing blitz. So we're anticipating that perhaps we had to have 400 to use for this first weekend and then regroup there, and that will give us a better estimation of how many people might show up for the second two Saturdays. The state is launching a website, and I hope to have more details soon, but they're launching a website for people to register on if they're interested in being tested. And I suspect that that is so that we can all try to get some counts of how many people anticipate coming through. But that's all the details I have on that at this stage Chair Archileta.
Okay, and then can you tell me a little bit about the messaging that's going to go forth then, you know, out to the general public?
I can. And so the communications team is already working on it. It's going to be through our standard messaging, which is on all our various different social media sites. We'll also send the information out to the different towns and cities within Coconino County so they can share it with their respective constituents and make sure it's messaged widely. Again, it will be at the HHS King Street location and at Fort Tuthill from 10 to 3:00. We'll also get a flyer to the Board and would ask that the Board disseminate to any of their groups as well.
Okay, and this is Saturday of this week.
It is Saturday of this week. It's very quick. We're working hard to get our volunteers and everyone together so we can pull off the two sites. And I don't know that we will be able to have the two sites for the future Saturdays. It's really going to depend on how this Saturday goes. And if there's a need, if there's not a huge need of people showing up and presenting, we may be able to condense just to one site. But for, because this is the first time it has been open to anybody, regardless of having doctor's orders or not, we wanted to be able to provide a location, center city that people could walk to or bike to, especially since the weather's so nice and transportation, it can be hard to get to Fort Tuthill. So again, that's why we've had the two sites for this Saturday, and it really is a trial run to see how it goes, and then we'll make decisions based on how this Saturday goes for the next two weeks.
Okay, and then we'll be taking it out to other areas of the county, the blitz as well, or is it just particular to the county seat here in Flagstaff?
For now and for this Saturday, it is particular to the county seat. We do not have the staffing resources to go to other outlying county areas on Saturday. That may change as we try to work with our partners. Again, this was just announced by the state on Friday, so we are quickly trying to vet that. If we could offer it in other areas, we would like to. I will share that this is not just open to county health departments, other private providers are able to join the blitz as well with the state, and they qualify for the funding as well. So we've been sharing that information. So just for example, North Country Health Center, I don't know their details, but I believe they're planning on standing up sites in some of their outlying locations, and I imagine other providers are as well. So hopefully through this type of initiative, there will be our partners that are in outlying areas.
Great, yeah, and when you have the provider, like the medical provider calls, if you could just put this on the agenda to check in with them, because I think it would be good for all of us to at least, you know, coordinate in terms of just being able to let the public know the various opportunities that exist. And even if there's primary care providers that are going to be doing some of this, and I don't know if they're going to be doing some of this in their offices or if they're allowed to or whatever, but I think like information like that would really be helpful to try to have like a coordinated information out to the public.
Thank you Chair Archileta. So what my goal is, is to communicate with ADHS. Because you have to register with ADHS as a provider site, we had to fill out the paperwork and register as well, and you have to do that if you want to tap into any of that funding for the sites. So they will be the master holder of sites participating, so that's a good place for the health department and the EOC to turn to, to learn who all our partners are across the county. So we'll try to receive a master list from them, and then we could put that information on our website as well.
That's great. Okay, and then just for clarification, just to reiterate, I understand that people can show up, but are you encouraging people to actually schedule specific times or specific blocks of time? Are people, are you encouraging people to register at some point for the test or just show up?
I am encouraging people to register. I don't know what that registration looks like, and honestly, I don't know if they've stood the website up yet. So I don't think that there's going to be a block of time or an appointment per se. It's just do you plan on attending? And I could be wrong, ADHS may ask more specifics through that registry. To come to our two sites though, people do not need an appointment, what we do ask, and we are encouraging people to be there, we're excited to be able to offer the testing for the first time to anybody. So we are encouraging community members to participate, but we also encourage them to be patient. There is going to be, you know, some traffic flow issues, we're going to try to manage those the best we can, but if people do really come out, there may be a wait. And I don't know how long to tell people to anticipate waiting, but we only have so many swabbers, is what we're calling them, that are actually taking the specimen. And there is, you know, paperwork like any test that has to be completed. So we really encourage people to come out, but please be patient with us. Our staff and our volunteers are going to move people through the process as quickly as we can.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much Marie. Other members of the Board with questions, please go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Go after, go ahead.
Go ahead Supervisor Parks.
Thank you Madam Chair. Dr. Peoples, we are anticipating at this time quite a few visitors from other counties. Will they be invited to have testing as well if they're from outside the county?
Supervisor Parks, thank you for that question, and you have posed the million dollar question. We have requested guidance from ADHS on that question exactly. We do anticipate that we would have people from other counties or other locations. I mean, even just with our regular testing site, there's been occasion where people are driving through and meet criteria and, you know, we haven't quite known what to do in those. So we have asked for guidance on that. Part of the questions, just to give the Board some of the context behind it, if we do test those people, because if the goal of the state is to reach 10,000 to 20,000 people, and we don't want to turn people away, but we want to know will we be reimbursed for those specimen kits as they resupply county stock? You know, if we have a lot of people that do come from Maricopa, for example, just because they're visiting, would we be able to replenish our supplies? And will the respective county then handle the notifications? Because the disease investigation, even if it's a negative, is a lion's share of work. It's difficult to do those contacts back and to reach people with either negative or positive results. So we want to know if those respective counties would then be taking that work on, or if we are actually turning people away. We want to have that guidance so that we have something to stand on when we're saying we're so sorry, we can't serve you. So we're looking for responses back, and I will send the Board an email when I have answers to that question.
Great, thank you Dr. Peoples.
Other questions or comments from the Board?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Ryan.
So just a couple of quick questions Marie. One would be, do they need to be symptomatic?
No sir, anybody can come, they don't need to be symptomatic, they don't need to have a doctor's order, they just need to think that they've been exposed to someone with COVID. And quite frankly, since we have statewide and community transmission, anybody fits that criteria.
And then the second question along that line, people are getting all confused about the types of tests that are out there, and can you just explain the test a little bit and why it can help?
Sure, so what we are offering is a nasal test. It is a pretty invasive swab in the nasal cavity. It is not pleasant, it's not going to have lasting pain, but it is invasive, so people need to be prepared. It is quite uncomfortable, especially for young kids. But that is all we're offering at this point in time is the nasal. Again, because we don't have the rapid up, I do understand that when we do have kits for the rapid, that there is a possibility of doing throat swabs instead of nasal. But that again, is going to depend on the kits that we receive and the types of swabs.
And then beyond that on the testing, a lot of discussion, there are tests for antibodies, but there are these tests to just see what's happened. Can you explain that?
Yes, thank you. So these tests are just to tell you if you currently have COVID or not. We are not offering antibody test. TGen had some new information released, and I don't want to speak to what TGen is doing, I'm certainly not an expert in that. What I can share is that they're doing antibody testing. I believe they put out a call for volunteers. I don't know the criteria for those volunteers, so we can try to find additional information for that as well and perhaps link it to our website. But there's that opportunity, and I also have learned this week that Sonora Quest is offering antibody test. I don't know what the costs are or what the eligibility criteria, but antibody tests are definitely becoming more available as we get through the COVID event.
And so just the last one would be quickly, so you said something about a website, how do people find out about this when they start to think about going there?
So we're still vetting that. We will link the ADHS website for registration to ours, once we're for certain that it is up and going. And again, the registration, I believe, is just to try to get some counts. It is not my intention that if people don't register, we would turn them away. It would be helpful if they would register, that way we can say, oh my gosh, 500 people are registered, you know, we need to beef up our staffing. But if people just plan on coming out, again, as long as they're willing to be patient with us, we will get them seen.
Thank you Marie, thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there other members of the Board who would like to speak to this item, either ask questions or make any comments?
This is Lena.
Yes Vice Chair Fowler, go ahead.
Yes Marie, as you know, the City of Page community has been asking for tests, and most of the testing has been in Flagstaff and not out in the communities. As you know, we have testing in Fredonia, but not in Page. Now, when will it be offered in Page? I know that you're saying that you'll be working with the providers out there, and are you working with Banner Health to be able to provide that testing for all in Page and surrounding communities?
So I will certainly work with Banner Page, thank you for the question Vice Chair Fowler. I will work with Banner Page to make sure that they are aware of the testing blitz, which they should be. The state has also been calling people to let them know, but I can certainly get that communication. However, Page Banner would need to work directly with the state and register, as we had to do by filling out the paperwork, so they can tap into the funding and be counted into that. So I can make sure that they have the information, and I'd be happy to do that. In terms of when we would go test in Page, as I have shared before, we have not done that because there has been a lot of testing available in Page, which is how we know there's all of the positive cases. And you are correct, we are going to Fredonia this week. It is a one-time event. We have not been to Fredonia previously. We have not seen cases in Fredonia, and as part of public health surveillance, we need to know if they're truly insulated and don't have cases, or if it's just because they have not had access to any testing, and there's been extremely limited testing there. So we are going Thursday to do that testing in Fredonia. As soon as the supply chain opens and if we have additional kits, we would like to be in the Page area and to work with Page Banner and others to stand up some drive-through sites as well. We had originally worked with some of the providers in that area, and it just wasn't feasible unfortunately because of the limited supplies from both PPE aspects that they had on hand, as well as us. So we continue to work that angle Vice Chair Fowler, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you, and a follow-up, and how long do you wait for, let's say Banner, for some reason or another, or one of the healthcare facilities there is unable to offer this, then how long do you wait to say that we will then, like let's say next weekend, just go out there and start testing? I know that you have been saying it's a community spread there, but I thought Flagstaff was community spread also, and you're offering that service here, and why not in that area?
So up till now, we've been required to have providers with us, and this was part of the conversation earlier that we had related dovetailed into the security. With the brand-new announcement that testing is open to everyone, I am not sure if we're going to be required to have a provider on site, as we really have been in the past. So I don't know if that opens it up. As you know, the Health District does not have a medical provider, and so when we partnered with both Flagstaff Medical Center and North Country Healthcare, we've really done our sites around where they have locations. And so that has been a huge part of it, and some of the limitations, even though we are really grateful for those provider partnerships. When we were planning our initial, and I apologize, I can't remember if this was like in week two or three of the events, but when we were planning events in Page, it was with providers that were there in Page, and those providers could not work out the logistics for various reasons, not for lack of want. So we will continue reaching out to those providers to see if anything has changed. And if we do not in fact have to have a provider with us, that does change the dynamics quite a bit in terms of what we're able to do in other outlying areas.
Thank you.
Are there other members of the Board who would like to ask a question or speak to this item?
Just one more follow-up. So Marie, there are quite a few people in Page that have been really wanting to get tests. Would it be advisable to encourage them to drive to Fredonia, that's an hour and a half from Page? Is that something that you might encourage?
You know, thank you Vice Chair Fowler, that's a great question. With social distancing, that's a tough one to answer. If people can drive and they're driving with their family members that they live with anyway, so there's no more fear of transition, excuse me, transmission or spread, then absolutely. If people from Page came to the Fredonia site, we would see them. Where the tricky part gets into it is if they're co-sharing rides with people that they don't typically interact with, then they could either be exposing themselves or exposing others.
Thank you.
Just quickly, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So Marie, just in terms of, so this will be a tricky one, because as we know, there aren't many testing supplies, so they're going to do a blitz, so I would imagine there's a certain reserve that you're going to need just so emergency personnel can continue to function. And then just a little bit of an update on testing at the state level, supplies, you know, that's what we really need to function as a community.
Yeah, thank you. So Chair Archileta, Supervisor Ryan, you said it perfectly, we're very concerned. We were thrilled to learn about the testing blitz. Again, it was just announced on Friday, so we've asked a lot of questions, most of them have not yet been answered. But we were concerned with PPE. So in the form where we had to register some of the, they asked us what we would need, they being the state, asked us what we would need to be able to participate. We put in their specimen kits, we put in their additional PPE. We are incredibly concerned about utilizing all of our resources. And so yes, we are holding some back so that we could at least do our same number of tests, what we've been averaging through all of next week. And we're also putting some back in terms of matching PPE numbers to go along with that. But we are incredibly concerned, and this is something that the chief health officers have brought up via email and in the calls with the state, is that we're really glad to be doing this, but we do wish we would have been included in some of the initial planning and the messaging so that we would have known beforehand, so that perhaps we could have tried to prepare better. And you know, I say that with a caveat, because without having supplies, PPE and test kits, I don't know what we would have done to prepare better. I mean, it's one thing to pull staff together, but the supplies are short, and there's no way around that. But thank you. Okay, last, we have time for one more question or comment before we need to take a recess. Other members of the Board?
If Art doesn't have a question, I can do.
Okay Supervisor Babbitt or Supervisor, I think we had Supervisor Parks already, but Supervisor Babbitt, do you have a question?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, super, go ahead, then you can, last Go ahead, then you can, you can, last question to Supervisor Fowler. Go ahead.
I'm selling.
Selling your question?
I'm selling my question to Lena.
Sounds great. Go ahead, Vice Chair Fowler.
Thank you. Thank you, Art. So I, just a follow-up, this is offered to all the tribes as well, the, the, hold on, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say whoever has the phone ringing, mute your phone, please, but it's you, that's funny.
Oh, she lost her question.
Hey, what's, I have to take advantage of it. So this is open to all the tribes as well, and, and, and back to Page, do you know if Banner Health and the other hospitals there, or I think there's two providers there, they still require a hospital, I mean, doctor orders? Is that the case?
With the testing blitz, it is not required to have doctor's orders, and Banner Page has been invited to participate. I do know that as well with providers. And regarding, is it open to tribes? It is open to tribes, and I do know that Mr. Ox to be forwarded information, or a member of the staff forwarded information to Dr. Jim, who's been our contact. So we, the information has been shared, and they are able to register and participate.
Thank you, and thank you for everything that you're doing, you and your team are doing. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Well, so this is very exciting for our community. We look forward to getting the additional information. We know it's coming together. I mean, obviously, we learned about this on Friday. Today's only Tuesday, so really, it's still, it's still a work in progress, but I'm very excited about getting this up and going for Saturday, and I'm sure board members would like to get the information out. So when the, you know, the final plan is developed and when the information is ready to distribute, I'm sure all of us would, would be happy to assist in getting that information out to community and letting them know, you know, how to go about accessing the testing.
Liz, I apologize, but probably, yeah, really quick point on this one, though, is, so Marie, we have limited tests. When Denver did this, they had miles and miles of lines, so we probably need a strategy of informing people that, you know, there's a cutoff point or something for public information so that we don't have people lining up in huge numbers, and then we're out of kits and they're still in line, that kind of thing.
So what we're anticipating, thank you Supervisor Ryan, what we're anticipating, and it's just based on like phone calls we've received, call volume, and the regular testing that we're doing Monday through Friday, we've been averaging about 30 specimen collections per day there. Our call volume has fallen off, but we could be completely wrong. Weather's nice, people are going to be out and about, people have been wanting access to open testing, and it's finally here, so we definitely could be inundated. So we are definitely planning, we'll also work with our local law enforcement. I don't anticipate they're going to be able to staff this, but we would, of course, want them to be aware of what's occurring, so that if there are those traffic problems and people are lined up around, you know, blocks, we need to make sure our partners are aware of that. We are, as I've already shared, planning security. We did have to put in an estimate in our plan with ADHS about how many we thought, and we've said that we could probably do 200 on Saturday, and that would give us, leave us with a pretty healthy reserve. If we have to go over that a little bit, we can, but you're right. If we get inundated and there's 500 people at each site, we are not going to be able to serve everybody, and so we are going to have to turn people away. And that is going to be difficult, and we're going to include that in our messaging. I mean, this is really first come, first served in terms of how people are served. It's not going to be based on symptoms. It's not based on vulnerable population groups, and we're following what ADHS put out, and it's open to everybody. So we, we're really working hard to craft that plan. We're going to have a lot of staff at both sites, again, to walking up and down the line, so people aren't just sitting and wondering, you know, what's happening? How long is my wait going to be? We're really going to try to give that information. We also don't want people getting out of their vehicles. If people bike up or walk up, they'll keep their place in line. But again, we don't want to mix sick populations with potentially well populations or those asymptomatic. And so, you know, we're going to be doing, this is going to be very structured, is how we're hoping. So I appreciate your questions. I wish I had more of a definitive answer to say, we're going to serve X number of people, but we honestly, it's kind of a wild guess to know who will show up.
Well, thank you, Marie. We appreciate the update. Thanks for the incredible work, and we look forward to helping get the information out to the community about Saturday. Okay, we are at the point now where we are going to take a recess. We will be reconvening at 1:15, so this will be an opportunity for people to be able to get lunch or continue their, their work individually, and we will reconvene at 1:15. There is a different call-in link and number for this afternoon, because we have a different, a different group of presenters than we had this morning. So just a reminder to everyone who is going to join us for the afternoon program, after the recess, there's a different link for you, for you to use for the afternoon session, and it should be, you know, part two, and you'll see the link. Eric, I'm going to turn it over to you if you have any additional information on how, how people should connect to this afternoon's portion of the board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. For the board members and presenters, please use your link in the calendar to access the board meeting for this afternoon. For the public, it is part two listed on top of the agenda. The phone number is posted there as well, and we will make those postings within the chat here, so people can see it as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. This meeting is recessed until 1:15.